Thank you. And good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's meeting of June 16th, 2021. We all pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we'll start with the town administrator's weekly update.
All right. So it's been, I guess, two weeks since we've seen each other. So first, just for formality, is the election results. There were 249 ballots cast. Is that me, or is it echoing?
It's a little echoey.
Okay. 249 ballots cast for Selectmen, and Mr. Walsh received 200. There were 49 miscellaneous write-ins and blanks. Road Commissioner District 2, Mr. Doliver, received 173. Mr. Long III, 74, and two write-ins or blanks. School Committee, remember, they had to vote for three, they had to, the option of voting for two. Mrs. Gardner received 194 votes, Mrs. Stanton 191, and 113 blanks, of course, happened. If you only chose one, then the second one had to be blank. So I think that I've sworn all but one of those people in is a school committee member, but her, the new term doesn't really start until July 1st, so I'll catch up with her. So this has been our first week with our new CEO, Jason Siviny. He has dived right into the position and is doing well. We're gonna keep the office downstairs, the doors locked and closed, for another week. They're doing some rearranging and filing. I think that we talked when we brought the land use secretary in. One of the things that the neighboring CEO that was helping us with found out was that the prior filing system was a little different than what they chose to use this time. If, every time you had a different situation on your property, they created a new folder. So if you had a violation, or a tree, or a planning board, there were three prop, three folders with the same map and lot. And it's become a problem. If a real estate agent comes in and says, "I want to see everything on this map and lot," you know, you had five or six different places to go and see if they had something going on. So with Cheryl's assistance, the land use secretary has, is doing a major recombination of everything and overhaul of all the files. Both CEOs think it's very helpful, and it's a lot easier to find, so that's good. So we're giving them a week. You know, they, Mr. Siviny's been coming up and talking to people and sorting things out. But we want to keep the doors locked a little longer until they finish doing everything they need to do down there. So he has received his login from the state of Maine. That took a little while to get in regards to his state certifications. Right now, he's already started on the legal fees. It's the first one, legal cases that Paul Demers from the state recommended he take. So he's working on that one, and he's given him a list in order, so we'll start chipping away at those. We also scheduled him a training on E-911 on June 29th, two Tuesdays from now, so he's getting there. The land use secretary is proving to be a very, very good fit. She's polite, energetic, she's got great office skills, so doing well. Next thing on the agenda is the liaisons. It's that time of year where we talk about who you want to be liaisons for.
Yep.
I took it upon myself to make some lists, and this, these lists are, these lists are just based on what, who's already had what committees. I mean, the goal is, is that you all, if you only served a three-year term, you'd have different committees more than once. For the purpose or the reasoning that the capital improvement committee just recently started, and Kim is on that, it is recommended that she stay on that because they just kind of got started. Same is true with marijuana. They've only met once or twice, but David's kind of been there. So I left Ed on the land use, so that you all had one that you were staying with. Kim, you haven't had roads?
No.
All right, so I gave Kim roads, capital improvement, and fire department.
Okay.
Ed, school committee, land use department, and the rec. I think you've had them all at this point, at least once, but David, warrant and finance, which I don't think you've had.
No.
Transfer station.
I've had it once.
You've had it once, but Kim had it last year, and Ed, you've had conservation force, which don't meet very often, and the marijuana committee. Thoughts?
Yep.
That works. Okay. We'll put their memos and send them out to the department heads so they know who their point of contact is. I spoke to the fire chief today, and he asked that we extend the paramedic position through June 25th. He has gotten some interest, but because it's a position that can't be filled until the voters decide if they want to fill the position, he's asked that we extend it to June 25th. So with your approval, it'll stay on the website, and we'll advertise it a little longer.
Yep. Line of vein.
The treasurer asked that I remind you of an email that she sent you regarding the American Rescue Plans funds. This is, these are the funds that we've talked about a couple of weeks in a row that were allocated to the towns, but with very strict instructions on what we can use them for. Michelle has been attending the Zoom classes. Mamie Municipal just put out some legal notes on it, so she'd like to take a look at those so that she can hopefully come before you in the next few weeks to talk about it. And just a reminder that the assessors are in town. They have pulled, they've been here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday so far. There's three employees. Cheryl pulled well over 100 property cards for them, so they are going door-to-door on anybody that had a building permit between April 1st, 2020, through March 30th, 2021. So we have received a decent amount of calls, so they have, remember, a letter signed by me, and their plate numbers and everything have been given to the Sheriff's Department, so it's, we've notified everybody that we could. Last week, or two weeks ago, we discussed Flat Ground Road, and it was decided by the board that it wouldn't go back on the agenda. However, I did receive an email after the fact from legal, and I did check with David because he was the one that originally asked me not to put it back, or said that he thought it was done. So I got his permission, just so everybody knows, before I put this kind of back on there. But before you guys had that conversation two weeks ago, I had already emailed Mamie Municipal to say, "Do you have a record of this document that we're looking for?" So I got a response after the fact, and he said it was okay for me to share it. So it says, "Jennifer, we do have a database of the inquiries we receive and do keep archived copies of all emails we send." I looked in our database, and it looks like the only correspondence relating to Flat Ground Road between 2017 and 2019 were some emails in 2018. However, these did not discuss the status of the road itself. They were discussing a road improvement project and the fact that the project went over budget. I have attached the email chain to this email. I'm sorry that it's the only, I'm sorry that it's only in text format. For some reason, we're having a problem getting these particular emails to print out. I hope this is what you're looking for. So what it is, is it's an email that was Thursday, October 18th, that went to the treasurer. I won't read it all through, but it's a, basically, it says, "Michelle, the agreement that set out in Article 26A contains a specific limitation of $20,000." So this email was around that agreement that was put before town meeting. I went down to read some of Michelle's, and it was all about Article 40 and appropriating the fund. So that's all they could find between those two years, so there's really enough nowhere else to look. Michelle and I scheduled a workshop on Friday at 3:00, about a week ago, that we took it upon ourselves to invite you to. For posting reasons, I had to post it. I didn't see, hadn't seen you, so we posted it and thought, "If you wanted to join us, great. If not, okay, we'll still be having our workshop." We try to do this every year before town meeting, just to kind of review the warrant articles, make sure that if there's anything the board needs from us, we'd like to know Friday instead of Saturday. So that'll be at 3:00, if you can come.
Be here.
Huh?
Said we'll be here.
Okay. Kim, you called me one day, and I, I remember half of it. Somebody is coming to the transfer station for something.
DEP. They're coming to do their inspection that they haven't done in quite a while.
Do we know, remember what day that was?
No, but I have it home on the calendar. I wrote it down.
I remember that for you.
I feel like it's the 29th of July. I'm at 10:00 AM, but I, let me check.
I just want to make sure that I get it over to Bob, and who did we just give the transfer station to?
David. I think David got the transfer station.
Bob doesn't know about it yet because I didn't have a date, so.
Yep. I'll text her to you when I get home tonight, so you know.
Excellent. Planning board training, it was Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Mamie Municipal is holding that training. Remember, they had one a little while ago. We canceled it because we were in between staff. It is July 20th. It's a Tuesday night. The secretary has a flyer to give out in the planning board meeting tomorrow night. And as I've understood from conversations with you guys at different times, you're want this to be a mandatory training for the planning board and zoning board of appeals members. Maybe the liaison can attend. I could sign you up if you wanted to go in.
You can put me on it.
Oh, yeah, that is me.
That's you.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday night. I'll just adjust the hours downstairs staff to make sure that they, they go, they're all set for it, so.
Is that live, Zoom?
It's Zoom. Mamie Municipal Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah, put me on it. I'll, you know.
You want to go, too?
We should.
We should, yeah, I think all of us.
Okay. And you have those marijuana classes coming up. You saw all those emails?
I didn't, but I'll look. Yeah, I knew they were coming up.
Yeah, a week or two ago.
Okay.
We signed you up for all of those. Remember, you were having breakfast with weed or something?
Right. I just, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I knew they were changing.
Did you ever look in your email? I mean, did they ever come? You must have gotten notifications by now. I feel like that was a couple of weeks ago we did that, right, Cheryl?
Yeah, I haven't.
Take a peek.
I'll peek.
So we had the conference call with the auditor. It's a same firm, but it's a new auditor, a new gentleman that we haven't met before, but nevertheless, he is planning on coming down to audit the week of August 30th. So whoever the chair was, which we skipped over on the agenda, will need to be here to meet and greet.
August 30th?
August 30th.
Okay.
A week ago. Just a couple of kudos to our, I like to call my road boys. Adam was very diligent in helping out. Does that Grady's, what lake is that? I'm so bad. No, no, not that one. Where are the Causeway signs? The one I called you about today, Will.
Oh, yeah, the signs.
Horn Pond, okay. So remember, we had that, we had that group come to us about Horn Pond and the literary signs and so forth. Unfortunately, the timing was really bad when Mr. Letourneau passed, so it kind of got set aside, but Adam has stepped up, and he's going to get those put up for this week. And we all read about our hero, Will. I was actually sitting at a Mexican withdrawal margarita, too, in when I got a call saying, "I need help, help, help." So I called Will and him and his brother.
Did you find out who owned the goat?
Uh, no, we won't get into much of that, but, so he went out and used his lasso and brought it in.
I know a lot of people both.
Huh?
I think I know a lot of people both, so I wouldn't have got to it.
Didn't the property, the property owner, did she let you use hers?
No, they got down the road, I went and saw them, took them, and bought them.
Oh, good.
That's awesome.
Oh.
We appreciate both of you for doing those little things that make the town, you know, that people don't normally hear about, so. And the last thing, I think that there'll be maybe a couple of people in the audience, Dennis for sure, that will remember Ann Pepper. Remember Ann Pepper, for those of you who remember Ann Pepper? She actually passed away. I got an email, obituary notice from her nephew. She did square dancing, and line dancing here in the town hall for a while.
I remember her when I was fire chief.
Yes.
Yes, pepper steppers.
What were they?
Pepper steppers.
Pepper steppers, yes.
Yes. She actually used the fire station quite a bit.
Yeah, she was a really nice lady. She was a resident. She had moved away because she was ill for a while, but.
That's too bad.
The nephew, I've been kind of corresponding with him, and he said that she, she had dementia before she passed, but one of the things that she always talked about, and he didn't really, I don't think he knew all the, was Acton Maine, Acton Maine, you know, because it was just kind of weird how it came to surface. But she passed. The services are en masse, so we won't go, but just wanted to let the town know that she had passed. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. I know we all signed the warrants and bills, so I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion. We sign, we approve the agenda. That's what you're looking for, right?
I'll second that.
We don't do one or the other.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All ready? Minutes of the last meeting, actually, I'll make a, I know I wrote the date down.
Well, let's see, I'd have to count backwards.
Yeah. What is today?
16th.
June 2nd, Cheryl says.
I got it right here. There we go. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021 Selectmen's meeting.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? All right, so that's done.
We're going to do elections.
We're going to do elections?
Election of chair.
Is it? Okay, so we're going to do an election of a new chair. I can't believe a year's gone by, and I survived.
You did good.
You did, you did well.
You did good.
So do we have to make a, a motion?
Make a motion.
We need to make a motion that David Winchell will be our next chair.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Can I vote on that?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
Nope.
You're all voted anyway.
Yep.
And he'll start at our next meeting. All right. Department head or committee chair updates. Anybody have any updates, or? Okay. Old business. I don't see anything under that. We got lots of new business, though.
Lots of new business.
So A, resident concerns. Tom Cashin?
Yes, so Mr. Cashin is here tonight. He's got some concerns that he came in and shared with me today, and.
Where's the podium? Do we?
I, we might have tucked it away from the election. It's probably hidden in a closet somewhere. Do you want a podium, Tom? Will? We'll check one of those. Virginia Will will get it for you. He's young and strong.
Yeah, we actually did away with it for COVID, but now that we're beyond, we can pull it back out.
Look in the kitchen, Will. We tuck things everywhere on election day. It could even be in a booth, but.
Just think that might, might be easier.
He may rather sit, too, and just have a little while.
That's, that's fine.
Tom, you want to come up? They've got a chair for you. She's getting a podium. I don't know if you'd rather, if you'd rather sit, you're welcome to. If that's the case, we might not put the podium in front of you. Yep. Will, let him decide if he's going to sit or stand, and then we can.
Sit or stand.
What'd he say? Did he not do both?
Yeah. Yep, thank you.
Good evening, neighbors and Selectmen. My name's Tom Cashin. I used to be your friend on the planning board, and now some health issues. Maybe you steal back a lot of that to me. When I go home to the office in town, I was troubled to see that the burnout contractions, yes, I've heard you call, then get.
Iron tails. I test, yep.
I was going to say, something suiting, but I like an iron tail restaurant. The device that they, with the bike on, I guess, they rev up the tires and make it a burnout, what we used to do when we had 18 or 16 in the city. It struck me, number one, aggravated that this thing was going to appear again. I thought there had been some objection last year, just in terms of public health. Now I think it warrants more consideration before that is allowed to occur. I was upset to see that the, I guess the board had a chance to consider the issue, but it was kind of followed into the mass gathering ordinance or the permit itself that was, well, the mass gathering ordinance does it, many folks, does it not?
Yeah, yes.
Well, within, and there are just real life issues that the, the lake owners across the street, number one, they don't go shopping, you know, leave burnout, they're, they're a colleague, they're putting the lawn outside, whatever they normally do. And to allow the conscious air pollution that results from this activity, it just happens in the water. It's not for anyone's benefit besides the publicity draw of Mr. Martinez's stealth. And I wish him well. I want to go, and I spoke to him about, and then consideration, making proper conduct in respect to this CDC guidelines, but I understood from the get-go that those two elements can work together. In the short span of things, I just hope that it does any way that you could rescind or somehow or other express a, an opinion as to the benefit to the community of allowing this activity to go on in the future. I wish you'd be more mindful of public health issues that are already plaguing us. And obviously, there are people in the community that have, I mean, systems, kids with asthma, every other, I don't know, education, air quality, the last two days. But practice does, this is no physical benefit, no practical health benefit, and I can't put all that in, in conceit of why you would approve it again. But, but so, anyway, it's time, and so it seems to be on the agenda for burnout. I had a good talk with Greg a lot of months ago, and we were just one another in terms of another issue that I was able to point this out. This seems so, kind of dry, but I'm surprised that it went forward. Maybe it was, I guess I heard that it had been kind of sandwiched in between or with the mass gathering.
Well, it was, it was one of the events. When I, I didn't speak to Tom today. He came in, and what I said to him was that Mr. Martinez presented to you a list of events for the week, and that was one of the items on there.
That's something that's done every year.
He has done it, done in the past. I guess I'm not sure what, short of his concerns, that I, what, how it's, you know, would have violated.
Well, I, I think about, okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, like, okay, the Acton Fairgrounds, don't they have those huge, big trucks that they?
Yep.
Do those races? And I'm not saying it's right, but I'm just.
Yeah, tractor pulls.
Tractor pulls.
The issue we have here is, this is something that happens every year. The person that wins the contest is from Acton, the ones last two years, I believe.
Right.
The people, there are people in the town of Acton that do enjoy it. We don't, we, I, I've been in Selectmen two years now.
I guess I never.
Rural Commissioner, this was going on, I've never heard of. The only complaints I've really ever heard of that was the noise complaints from the music and stuff like that.
Right.
The burnout contests, I've never heard a complaint on. You know, Tom, you said that you used to burn rubber when you were 15, you know? I mean, this is a place where, you know, these guys do it for, I think it's only a couple hours a day, that one day.
One day. It's only, and it's only a couple hours. It's not, it, I know, I know. But I'm just saying it's not going to be every single day.
The environment.
The contest, you know?
Yeah, we worry about the environment, you know, they got drag strips. That's what they do with the drag strips, they burn rubber. This is just something that, it's a one-day event, a couple-hour event a year, that we've really never had any major complaints on, as far as we know. And so, I mean, no, 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 go ahead.
I don't think there's been a time in the past where we've had such great concerns about air quality.
I mean, we can, that's, that's, and I understand, you know, there's some people who think that global warming, and some people don't believe in global warming and this and that, and I don't know if that's a discussion we want to get into here, but I mean, if it was, if the EPA thought it was a bad idea, they probably wouldn't allow it to happen either. So, I mean, I guess that would be a route that you'd want to go, but I don't believe there's anything in our zoning or any, any ordinance that says that we cannot not allow it.
Well, we don't understand, and I think says, any use that is not described in the listing of activities committed, language or something like, if there's any use of language that is not covered in this book, the town will consider it as not acceptable. So in order to get on lists of allowable uses, you have to have it listed on. This extension of this thing, the burnout, just surprised me that there weren't more concerned voices in the, in the, who would say that this was going to threaten on, on public health, and it smells bad, it lowers the air quality, and kind of, I can understand some of the emotions that bring these events to be, but it's kind of rubbing our noses in bad policy to say, "Well, this has happened for a while, it helps this town's business." So if we're nearing a heading to a few people, that's a lot. I don't buy that. We, we all have ways, and they should be considered in the context of the place, not just the town, but the neighborhood. I would imagine, as I said, that probably quite a few people in that strip of Lake community are surprised by, I don't know, 11, 12, 15.
Inshore Drive.
Was they secure of at least two?
Yes.
You know, what, what they feel like in terms of paying the taxes for these kinds of activities to go on, I'm sure it's not the most popular.
Well, we appreciate you coming, you know, forward with your concerns.
I would appreciate it. You know, we appreciate that the activities that go on in any instance, that the Selectmen would be aware that in the notes and crannies of the, the, the mass gathering ordinance, I guess this kind of, this will bind, what was mentioned, anybody know?
What's that?
Do you know during any mass gathering discussion, the phone was, and that was public?
Yeah, we knew. We knew about it. I mean, it's something that happens every year, you know, since it's been open, and so.
He gave them an itinerary of what's going on each day of the week.
Yeah, he told us exactly what was going to happen.
The board was aware.
This was no surprise, and honestly, at the end of the day, if someone on 11th Street, 10th Street, Inshore Drive, 13th Street, West Road, Loop Road, anybody in that neck of the woods, even someone driving by in their car with a convertible down, if someone from there was complaining about it, I guess there would be more whatever, but you've got to also understand, there's a bunch of people on those roads that go to that event. You know, there's, you know, I mean, I, I do understand your concern. I honestly, if there was more of it, then I would, I would take more, you know, I would consider it to be an issue if there was more complaints. And I, we knew exactly what we were signing when we signed it. This is something we, this gets done every year. It was a one-week thing that we signed, and we, and we knew what we were signing. It wasn't like we were Buffalo.
Maybe you should close the, close your note of what's supposed to stand in the smoke.
Oh, I, I drive by it, and I go to the dragway. I love the smell of burning rubber, so I mean, talking to the wrong guy, so.
Well, no, you're not the wrong guy. You're exactly, that, I'm trying to, because these, these kinds of trade-offs, where you want to print on eyelids, or you do something that displeases the neighbors, as a neighbor, lean over the fence and say, "Hey, keep it down," or "Keep it up," or whatever the hell you want to do. But, you know, my advice to a quiet dwelling, place, place that is not made just to be hazardous, like, maybe it's only a couple of hours, but. hazardous, like, maybe it's only a couple of hours, but we don't need to work on producing more air quality issues.
Tom, can I ask you a question? Is there a difference between what they do there in the three hours, they, they hook big diesel trucks up and pull the drag across at the Acton Fair with the smoke rolling out of their exhaust?
I mean, that's.
Because that's what they do.
I know, it stinks.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know.
I like to smell that too, so. I mean, I just, I, I look at it, I look at things a lot different. I, I'm pro-business, I'm pro letting people do their thing as long as nobody gets hurt, and the neighborhood, you know, 13th Street has to deal with that truck pull right in their neighborhood, literally. If there was big complaints on that, maybe there would be an issue, nobody's complained about that, we haven't had any, any big complaints about the burnout contest, and I just want to make sure that everybody's treated fairly. And the Acton Fair puts on their truck pulls and everything, and he's doing that for two hours, there's no difference, there's absolutely no difference, other than the truck pulls are down around the corner a little further. And so I, you know, that's just my point of view on it, and I understand yours, and you know, if this is something that later on down the road that, you know, those people down in Lake don't want, then, you know, that's a discussion we can have.
But you could act in the absence of express opinion from the voters.
Yep.
I sense sometimes the voters are squeamish about taking issues to the, to the arena of public media, they're afraid in some instances of retribution. I think we all have an obligation to make the world, the neighborhood a healthy place, you know, just take a long view on these issues, and I hope in the future that if you're not considering rescinding that, that this year that we give it a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, B, planning board appointment.
Bernard Broder came to last week and told you that he was interested in serving on the planning board, so.
Who?
Bernard Broder.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that the gentleman that spoke?
Yes. So currently, you have two alternate positions open. One expires June 30th of '21, and one expires the 22 or 23, I don't have it in front of me. So what I'm thinking the best thing to do, because, so if you're an alternate on the board and a regular member chooses not to be reappointed, or resigns, or leaves, or whatever the case, the alternates always move up first. So I've prepared an appointment to appoint him only until June 30th of 2021, and I did that because Mr. Long has publicly told us that he's not interested in being reappointed. So instead of me, unless that's changed, so instead of appointing Mr. Broder as an alternate to 22 or 23, whenever the other spot is, and then having next week to move him, or the first week in July to move him up when there's an open seat available, I thought we'd appoint him until June 30th of 2021. If that seat goes open, like we've been told that it's going to, then you could appoint Mr. Broder if you so chose to that regular seat. If not, you know what I mean, he'd get the alternate till 20, let's just say it's 22, and I don't have it in front of me, and then he'd have to move over when Mr. Long left, because he'd have the first refusal as an alternate. So it's cleaner and less paperwork and easier to track if he just goes until then and moves up July 1, if the seat remain, you know, is vacant, does that make sense? So there's two, you've got Crunkle who resigned because he took the job in Kennebunk, and you have Driscoll, who was the alternate, Pearson was an alternate, she moved up, so you've got two alternates open, so it's just a matter of whether we want to.
Do we have to do anything, or can we just wait till town meeting?
Well, there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, that was my next question.
There's a meeting tomorrow night, yes, so the idea is that, and he did sit through the, the meeting last week, just to kind of listen, and spoke to me after the meeting, and said that he was still interested in being reappointed, so.
I agree with you, I mean, as far as, you know, the reasoning and stuff, that's fine.
Makes sense, I mean, come, so, come June 30th, you're going to have to reappoint people that are interested in being reappointed to committees if that seat is open.
We'll just do it then.
Then you just reappoint him for whatever his three- or five-year term is, that had to work, so.
Yep.
That's how I prepared it, but certainly it's been changed in his line.
Make a motion, make a motion, yes, make a motion. Sorry, I'm having a brain cramp. Okay, so this is a certificate of appointment titled 30A MRS A 2602, the Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Bernard Broder III. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Planning Board Alternative Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2021, given under our hand 16th day of June 2021. What are your wishes, gentlemen?
I'll second that.
Actually, now we make the motion.
Right.
I'll make a motion when we appoint, was it Bernard Broder, is that the name?
Yep, Bernard.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's been, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed. I got ahead of myself on that motion thing.
It's okay.
There we go. I'm going to move on to the fiscal year closeout, June 30th, 2021.
So it's always looking at the calendar and looking at what day of the week, June 30th falls on, as you know, the treasurer and I have a year to close out, ranges from absolutely everything to everything, so, and it's her request that we close the office on June 30th, all staff will work regular hours, but we'll be, close the public, because with the next day being a business day, there's just no physical way to close out and move everything and start the new fiscal year if we don't have a day to work.
Is that a Thursday, Wednesday?
It's on Wednesday.
On Wednesday? Yeah, it's fine.
Will you permission to close on June 30th so that we can close out the fiscal year?
Yep.
All right, D, mass gathering permit.
The Maine Renaissance Fair is looking to be enacted on July 17th and 18th, and then again the 24th and 25th. They have paid the fee, they have the required insurance, they have, looks like fire and rescue are going to be on scene. As far as I know, we've got no concerns from the.
Same thing as last year, right?
Yep.
Year before.
Year before, right.
The year before, yeah.
They do it for two weekends the year before?
I think so.
Just one.
One.
It was a two-day, but just one.
Yep, so it must be expanding, they're looking for two weekends.
Yep, they're trying to make up for last year.
Makes sense.
I make a motion, we sign the mass gathering for the Renaissance Fair.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed.
They get quite a turnout of those things.
Yeah, I went the last time, it was a lot of fun.
Was it?
Yep.
They had fun.
I got there at 10:30, 11, the turkey legs were all gone.
Oh, no.
They went fast.
It's nice they're doing more at the fairgrounds, I think.
Yes.
Ready, there you go. And we can move on to E, propane contract.
So we've had Down East Contract for, Down East Energy for many years now, in the past, we've gone out to bid every, you know, about four to five years, it's been three years since we've gone out to bid. They have offered us a contract, I'm hesitant to, to give the price per gallon, because if you decide you want to go out to bid, there's a slight increase from last year, but based on the, the gas prices, I mean, I feel like it's reasonable, I guess, you know, I know it's hard.
Very slight?
I mean.
Don't, yeah, don't tell us the price, how much did it go up?
Well, if I don't tell, I mean, if I don't tell you, you want to know how much per gallon it went up?
No, I just want to know, yeah, did it go up two cents?
I mean, huh?
Two cents, three cents?
No, it went up more than that, it went up.
Well, I would imagine it went up.
It went up some, but it's, you know, it's still less than a buck fifty.
Right, last time we went out to bid was probably two years ago.
It's a two, yeah.
It wasn't very long ago. And we actually ended up paying more than what their contract was offered to us.
Right, and that's what I'm afraid of, I mean, we paid, paid a dollar for last year. I mean, I, you know, we really need to get in the habit of when we sign the contract, deciding, okay, this time next year, we're going to go out to bid, because it's hard to, you know what I mean, to present it to you, and like you said, it's hard to.
But you never know what oil prices do either, so they could.
Right, I mean, they're giving you a contract through 2022, I mean, gas prices seem to be going up, I'm not sure why, I don't know if that's going to affect propane.
We won't get into why.
Well, I know, and I'm hoping.
Everything's going up.
When I said I didn't know why, I just, so.
We should just stay with that this year, and maybe next year go out.
That's my thoughts, just stay with it.
I think you're right, you know, I remember that when we went out to bid, and it went up.
We ended up paying like fifteen cents more a gallon.
Right.
So, that's your, so I'll tell you that, so it's, I mean, it's a dollar forty-four a gallon, which is still extremely reasonable.
It's still a good price for propane, yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
So, the contract, other than that, is the exact same, it's for the 10,000, it covers the school, fire department, everything, I mean, it seems reasonable, but I'll make sure, making a point that this time, make sure we go out to bid before any numbers are released, I'll let them know ahead of time so they don't send us a contract, then we'll reach out.
I mean, we may or may not go out to bid next year.
Well, tell me what you want to do now.
I mean, well, I mean, we just watch what the prices do, and if things drop a little bit, we may see what they have to say.
All right.
Yeah, I make a motion, we sign the contract with, is it Down East?
Down East, yeah.
Down East, yeah.
For propane.
For a dollar forty-four ninety per gallon, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Do we have to sign anything?
Yep.
Yeah, there's a contract.
All right.
Say this is every year, we're all going to sign this, so.
At least two of you would be nice. Give the president's pile.
You only need two?
Yeah.
All right, so we are going to move on to Deputy CEO appointment.
So Mr. DeMers' appointment has expired, so we've shifted, because you did appoint Jason Sevigny as your CEO, so we're reversing them now to Jason, and the appointment on there is for three months, so it's September 30th. So Keith Michael is a Deputy CEO, so that he has the authority to sign off, but we need to extend it so that it doesn't expire.
So this is just a reappointment, do we need to read the whole thing?
Yeah, no, it's for a deputy rather than the, but no.
Yeah, the only difference is Mike DeMers is Deputy Code Enforcement Officer within municipality of Acton until 9/30/2021, and I'll make a motion that we appoint him as our Deputy CEO.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed, all right. That's next. So we're going to move on to solar fees.
Yep, so as the code office prepares to issue their first building permit for one of the solar projects, Mr. DeMers realized that there's no real specification on our fees schedule on how he's to bill this building permit. So he checked with the neighboring towns, did some research, I had a meet with Ed today, and he's basing his recommendation on the output of the system, so whether or not they're megawatts or they're kilowatts, he's recommending fifty cents per kilowatt, and this is something standard that, that surrounding towns do, there's a minimum fee of twenty-five dollars, so that's, we're looking for some sort of direction from you so that he can charge accordingly and release this building permit on H Road.
So when I spoke to him today, one of the, the one that he's getting ready to do, he estimated the building permit would be about seventeen hundred dollars, I believe.
Seventeen twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Seventeen what?
Seventeen hundred twenty-five.
Seventeen hundred dollars, seventeen twenty-five.
Yeah, for the building permit, for this particular one, so.
Yeah, and he kind of spells it out, I mean, if they go, you know, if he goes by megawatts versus kilowatts, I mean, the, it would be three hundred and forty-five dollars if he did the megawatts, which some towns do, and he didn't think that based on the, you know, the work that his office would do and the inspections and everything, that that was, he thought that was low compared to surrounding towns, so he recommended the lowest amount per kilowatt, which is the fifty cents, so. And we're starting to see a few more of these, the planning board is actually dealing with another one, so he just needs something on the books so he knows what the charge once they do their thing.
Did he happen to mention which towns are doing this?
I didn't ask, to be honest with you, he just said he spoke to neighboring towns.
We believe that, I mean, Shapley's one of them that is.
In the process of adopting the same fees, yeah.
Yeah, the same thing, so, yep.
What are your thoughts, too high, too low?
I think it's fine.
Thing with it, there's no, there's really no impact to the town with it, there's no draw to the schools, there's no.
Well, the assessment's going to cover that.
The assessment will cover all that, but I mean, there's no.
The idea of the building permit is to cover the term fees.
He goes out and inspects it a few times, is they're building it, and, yeah.
As long as it covers the inspection part of it and the paperwork.
Yep.
No, I believe, I think that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
We need a motion or?
Yeah, we all have a motion. I'll make a motion that we assess fifty cents per kilowatt with a twenty-five dollar minimum for building permits for solar farms.
I'll second that.
For solar, not necessarily farms, but for solar.
I'll second that.
Is it any solar?
Yep.
Projects.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed.
Is that in favor or opposed?
No, I was opposed.
Okay.
I'm just, sorry.
Is it too high?
That's how you want to see whether Johnny get.
Yeah, it's all right, you know, I, yeah, I just, I don't know.
You can't get a house building permit for that price.
Okay, well, I don't know, it just seems, you know.
What's the, what's the fee they're charging, we're charging them a fee of like.
I did a couple of today, I mean, that one that we did for Daigle was what, fifteen twenty-five, I mean, it's, you know, for full house from the start to finish, I mean, they're.
No, no, I was talking about, I was talking about, aren't we requiring these solar farms to put money.
Well, the planning board.
Planning board, yeah.
Board, the planning board makes that decision, so far, they won't, I don't know if they've done one before this one, the only one I've been involved in is the H Road, and the motion that was very clearly made was that they set up an escrow account for essentially the cost of the decommissioning project is what it comes down to, so.
So when they do that with, would that be done with other projects too?
Well, I mean, that's up to the planning board, that's, we're not getting involved in that, that's, I don't mean like that, but.
Well, no, but I'm just.
I just mentioned it, because there's a lot of money involved here.
You know.
I mean, I have to believe, I mean, with the planner and the planning board, I mean, if they're, if you have solar farm here and solar farm, I mean, I have to believe that they're going to, they're going to treat them all, they're the same, I mean, I have to believe that.
If this was just for solar farm, I.
The first one was ninety-four thousand, the escrow turned out to be to decommission it. That's what was required before the building permit would be issued.
Okay, well.
But the planning board sets that stipulation, so.
And honestly, at the end of the day, I, I have a little bit of, I know some people doing these, and the seventy hundred dollars isn't going to hurt them at all, believe me, so.
I guess I was more concerned when you said that it's not just for solar farms, like, if somebody wants to put solar on their house, is this part of it too? I, I guess.
Yeah, they'd have to pay a permit at some point, and Mike talked to us about that today, and he said if there was two, the solar, if, if somebody put two in their private property, that he said they were probably going to pay the twenty-five dollar minimum.
Yeah, it'd be most likely.
Okay, and that's what I was, I was just thinking of, like, homeowners, is it going to be like that?
A house is not a lot of money compared to what Elijah Ray would be.
And that's, that's kind of just what I was wondering, I just, for a homeowner. All right, well, it's passed, and so we'll move on.
Okay.
All right, Animal Welfare Society contract.
What you have in front of you is an exact duplicate, what David has in front of him had.
I have it now.
It's an exact duplicate of last year's animal welfare contract, the price did not go up, go up at all, Michelle and I pulled last year's. not go up, go up at all, Michelle and I pulled last year's, um, kind of surprised they're still going by the old census number, but it benefits the town, um, so we're just looking for a signature on that, it's identical.
So, you just need a signature?
Yeah, I think if you open it up, three thousand, like, the second page, it says a price per three thousand forty-one or something.
I'm sure it's here, I'm sure it's here somewhere.
Oh, it is.
Ah, there we go, thirty-four hundred and one dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll make a motion, we sign the contract to animal welfare society.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed, no? All right, so... That's what it says. All right.
You usually witness them, don't you?
That's what I was gonna say, should it be...
Yeah, as long as I still, even if it only calls for one signature, if somebody else can sign beside it, it's our auditor requires that these two of you are on it.
Emergency service communications, we're gonna talk about next?
Uh, so, David has, um...
I got it.
Pass everything down, okay, so this is for E nine one one, um, this is so that the state of Maine will issue a login for our code officer and our deputy code officer, so that they can start issuing nine one one house numbers, this is the training that I mentioned, um, beginning of the month, uh, at the end of the month, um, Michael is already certified, that he can't log into a Chapley to do acts, and so, these are just a formality, and have you sign them, so that the state will give them a login.
We don't have to make a motion?
No.
I don't think so, but...
Assuming you want them appointed.
All right. I guess we can move along to public comment, does anybody have any public comments? Okay.
I've got a public comment.
No.
I want to address a letter that was...
I need to use... David, I'm sorry, Roland.
There we go. Go ahead, Roland.
I just have a question concerning the, uh, H Road, uh, so, solar farm, uh, did that situation ever get resolved, as to whether or not they were going to post a bond, or whether they were going to establish an escrow account?
Yes, sir, it was very clear that the intent of the planning board was for an escrow account, and the ninety-four thousand some odd dollars is placed in an escrow account, it is not a bond.
That was my question, thank you.
I appreciate the help from prior members, Joyce and Dennis both took calls, and we reviewed tapes, and...
I'll be right back.
Where are you going?
I'm going to the ladies' room.
Okay, we'll wait for you. Sorry, sorry, I wouldn't...
Now, I just wanted to say, Joyce, Patrick, um, Dennis was on the right, but David, you were on the right side, when decommissioning the solar fields, you've got these posts, you've got the blast, you've got that, and you don't want people just walking away from it, so depending on the size, that's how the planning board would determine, you know, it's like revegetating a, you know, how babies, you have to revegetate, someone can walk away, so you want some money there, if you, if the town has to end up doing it itself, then, if you drive by the one in St. Andrew, you can see, there's Route Four, that's a farm, you can, in twenty, twenty-five years, you have a lot to pick up.
Yeah, and I, and I, I agree, I, I look at it a little different, I look at it like, um, okay, they put all this solar stuff up, this and that, um, that's land, the person who owns the properties, unless we go in and we take over the property, then it would be our issue, that would be the only time it would be our issue, wouldn't you think?
I think on lease, if they're leasing the land, but they own it.
But, but, but at the same time, there's still a landowner that's getting paid for this lease through a twenty-year period, a lot of money, and, and if, say, the, the people who are doing the lease in twenty years decide, hey, you know what, I'm out of here, you know, this isn't for me anymore, here you go, um, you know, that's the landowner's issue, but what I have an issue with is, we don't wanna make, you know, I'm not a pro-solar guy, I am an A, you know, I'm still on the fence with this, but if we're, if we're gonna go, we're gonna go solar, we don't wanna make it so expensive for these people to do it, that we, they can't do it, and ninety-four thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money to get started. Well, I, I understand, I understand that, but it's still, at the end of the day, you know who's paying for a lot of this, it's you and I, 'cause this comes a lot of state subsidies and stuff to pay for that stuff, so at the end of the day, we still pay for a lot of it.
We just didn't want, the way the planning board, it's a different way of looking at it.
Nope, if that's what the planning board wants to do, it's fine, I just, I have a different view on it.
That's what I said, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a different way of looking at it, but we just don't want to have this sitting there.
Yeah, 'cause there could be a bunch of them around, from the sounds of it.
I did, I had another question of the, um, staff on West River Drive, has anything come of that, or has anything moved forward?
No, the board set, um, set a minimum bid, they set a minimum price before, um, the election, but with the new staff down there, and election in town meeting, it just hasn't been priority, but I'll have it posted after, sometime next week.
Okay, interesting, what happened?
Yeah, they posted, was it forty thousand, I have to look them in.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand's the minimum bid, it'll go out to sealed, I'll probably run it the whole month of July, it just wasn't priority.
Because I was just curious, because, um, I was under the impression that municipality, you know, get what it's owed, and anything that above what you're owed, has to go back to the estate, so that's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, I'll double check with, with Lenkowski, I mean, we've had this conversation, and I know, I know there's, there was a senior citizen, well, there's a senior citizen law that passed recently, similar to that, um...
And I think, I think the estate, unless her husband's gone now too, is over in Rochester or something.
Well, there's, there are over, as we were told, we were told that there were over ten people that had the same heir, the same, you know what I mean, they were all the same heir to her, and based on the, um, the cost of it, they weren't interested in, you know, but they weren't seniors, as far as I understood, but I'll double check with Lee.
No, I think you're right, I don't believe they have all seen that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roland, it's my turn, uh, I just, I just wanted to react to a letter that's going all, all over York County, I guess, um, from a concerned citizen, um, that is, I guess took some time to write it, um, but unfortunately, I, I disagree with a lot of it, and, uh, the rec committee stuff, that, if you don't know, this was in about the Shaw's flyer, I believe, someone paid to have this shipped all over, and, you know, reading all stuff about how, pretty much, what it pretty much explains here is that, um, the select board is pretty much the reason why everybody is quit, between, um, code enforcement, deputies, secretaries, um, we've got the rec committee, I guess we're blamed for that too, um, as far as I know, this, this board was very, opened the door, gave them the reins, and do what you want, we had absolutely nothing to do with the resignations there. The half million dollars of extra money that we have funneled into Town of Acton, overcharged the taxpayers, um, get your facts straight, that money was only extra because of COVID. That half million dollars would have been spent at the school if it wasn't for COVID, okay?
First, and so they got, I mean, that was from the school.
Right, they got the money, and then they, based on their underserved fund, had to turn it back over.
The, uh, striping of the roads, how we were negatively whatever, um, what's it say here, um, why did the board speak negatively against paint edge of the road's safety lines, making it easier for elderly when it was favorable, presented by the road commissioners and the road committee, now to, to make a correction of this, we'll do some fact checking.
Did we talk about this too, um, just sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, um, they wanted it as a separate article, and you had said that...
And we told them, we can do it if you wanna do it, just use the money out of your regular account and do it.
Right.
And we did bring the road commissioners up, and they both said, we're not ready right now, so...
That's why we made the decision, yep.
Yeah.
I mean, there were two different reasons, but...
We have, um, on this list of complaints about us, that we, ten years ago, about the town hall, we put money aside for that, and, um, the bridge, the canal bridge, they got the, they've listed this, individual, individuals have listed the canal bridge, I do believe there's money on a warrant to fix that bridge. So, honestly, whoever wrote this, um, does not know their facts, does not, obviously, is not involved enough in, in the Town of Acton to know what's really going on, and, or, or maybe they do, and this is just a good way to open up a can, I guess, um, but...
I also wanted to, sorry, just speak on the fact that, there's something here that says, why does the town state that they can't get quotes for spending projects, um, unless a town meeting votes an appropriate monetary amount first, we only had maybe three weeks when we found out that we had this extra school money that was put back into the town, that is one of the main reasons, we, because we had to have the warrant done to get it to warrant and finance, I mean, if we had plenty of time, we could have gotten three estimates for everything that we're asking for, so...
Well, yes and no, I mean, it's, and that's one of the things, when contractors, I mean, I, you're absolutely right, I mean, the timing had something to do with it, and they contacted us and said, I mean, that's definitely a big point of it, but contractors are just not banging down the doors to give quotes for work that's not gonna start till July one, I mean, you know what I mean, they just...
But they will give quotes, I mean...
Nobody's giving quotes, you can't, you can't buy materials right now, I just got a price from a, a big supplier, they gave me a price, you know what the price is, it's just like when you buy scallops at the restaurant, market price, whatever it is, it is.
It is today.
Because they don't know what the price is gonna be tomorrow.
The price today, and yeah, whatever it is when you actually write the check.
You know, I, I didn't really have to address this, but this is kind of a cheap shot right before the, um, the town meeting, and, you know, if, if, the, the rec committee one really got me good, because that one there, a whole group of people that we gave them the reins to just quit. They left somebody, left somebody...
Most of them just chose not, the, the prior year, the...
But some of them quit, okay, and, and the higher ups quit, leaving people behind that weren't set up to do it, and got stuck in a position maybe they, they didn't need and want, but they're doing it, and, and kudos to Lori, okay, but, um, the, the code officer quitting, um, you can say whatever you want, I didn't, I don't believe that the select board was aware that the issue was as bad as it was, until it came, and at that point, there was no going back, um, but this is a cheap shot, um, when you, when you, when you do your concerned citizen, and you send it all over the, uh, York County, don't be a coward, put your name to it, get your facts straight.
My two cents on it, ninety-nine percent of the things on there is not true.
Gobbling.
We know that, the other thing, it was sent out was to poke the bear.
Yep.
The bear got poked.
Yep.
And he responded, "Thank you, Dave," I do appreciate your response to that, so...
You've gotten some calls, I know, I've told people to call you guys directly, residents...
I got one, I got one phone, yeah, I did get a phone call from a gentleman in town, quite concerned about it, I listed off what I knew about it, and at the time he called, I think I had seen, I'd seen it just minutes before, and, uh, knew that ninety-nine, like I say, ninety-nine percent of it wasn't...
The school board was very upset, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it was, it was meant to throw out there and throw doubt at town meeting, and to, uh, you know, throw us under the bus, and I'm just not buying it, you know, and the gentleman I spoke to said, "Okay, I understand that," he said, "I'm glad I called you," and, uh, yeah, and I think I might have spoke to him once before about an, about a totally separate issue, and I don't recall, off the top, I had what it was.
But you know, you, you got these towns all around reading this, and they, it makes it sound like, um, other towns in the area, I'm not gonna name, but we don't, I don't believe Acton's quite as dysfunctional as they want to make out to be, and, and why I say that is, um, the last election, we have, we, you ran unopposed.
I did.
Um, how many people we got in this room here, I, I like to think that if this room was packed, we have issues, because there's reasons why they're here, um, we don't get a lot of complaints, we have a certain group of people that do, but, uh, we do what we do to suffice them, but at the end of the day, this is embarrassing that the Town of Acton gets sent all over York County.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think anybody that looks at the bottom of it, like, okay, and once again, the person that I spoke to, uh, you know, had concerns that it was not signed, and I agree, so, anyway.
Roland, would you like to speak?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
In regard to the mail out, I, I had no idea that the mail out, I didn't tell my folks when I was...
Yeah, I didn't get one.
In regard to whether or not things are credible on that mail out, I don't know, because not privy to some of the information, I don't know why our code enforcement officer resigned after twenty some odd years, because it is not made public, and it's not going to be made public, I don't know why the assistant code officer filed agreements against the town administrator, and it was not resolved.
It was resolved, it was handled.
Yes, it was.
And, and, first of all, hold on before we go any further, Roland, okay, this is a personal issue.
So, we can't speak about it.
And for you to even know what was resolved and what was not, obviously, it was leaked out. But we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna talk about personnel issues.
We can't.
We're not gonna talk about any of it.
Because we're not allowed to talk about personnel issues, Roland, like, who of this bozo that wrote this doesn't understand that while we have fifty-eight percent of the time, we have to go in and have executive sessions, because we cannot discuss personnel issues in public, that's how we all get sued, Roland, okay?
What did they do before you guys decided that you had to do an executive session almost, I don't know, twice a month?
For what?
For these personnel matters.
Because when you have personnel matters, when people quit, when people...
Those issues.
...get raises, um, when we have to fire somebody, if there's an issue with the town administrator from the other person, we have to do that in private, Roland.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, and, and like they say over here, you gotta have HR, we do have HR, we have somebody head of our HR, if there's a complaint, they go to that individual, okay, we are not HR, but at the end of the day, we still have to do the hiring and firing, HR does not do that, okay, now, we take these executive sessions because we have to, it's not a chit-chat session all back, because we don't wanna be all here talking to you, Roland, because we have to.
Are you done?
No, I'm not done, after you're done, then I'll get done.
Either I, because you're never gonna shut me up here.
Okay.
Hey, okay.
All right.
Number one, okay, these were concerns that were pushed forward by some very reg people, people, okay, whether they choose to sign these, that paper, okay, that's their choice.
So, you know who it is then?
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think we need to, I, I don't think we need to argue over whether somebody signed it or not.
Because we all know who it is, Roland.
It doesn't, you know, again...
Really?
We all have a pretty good idea.
Really?
So...
So, anyhow, let's, let's let Roland finish, okay, go ahead, Roland.
Let me plug my thoughts.
Yep.
Kind of a little direct. It wasn't necessarily, I don't think it was meant to be a cheap shot, okay? What I think it was meant to do was to bring attention to things that certain individuals feel are of concern and they wanted to make sure that it was known throughout the town. I don't think that mail-out was done outside of the town of Acton. I may be wrong, maybe somebody in Marburg got one, I don't know.
My uncle got one in Saco.
Well, that's good. Whatever.
Yeah.
I didn't make the mail-out. I wasn't part of the mail-out, okay? Did I know that it happened after the fact? Yes. Do I think it was a good thing? Sure. Maybe it brings more people out to the town meeting, maybe. Maybe not. Maybe it won't have any effect whatsoever. I don't know. We'll see how many people show up at town meeting on Saturday. Personally, and this is my opinion, this town has far too many people who are apathetic to what's going on in the town, okay? Unless it directly affects them personally, they don't want to get involved. They would rather just let things slide. That's not the way I work and that's not the way I'm gonna stay. I'm done.
So I'm gonna respond to that. I don't, I do not believe that the town of Acton are all sitting home clueless, okay? There are a lot of people that know what's going on here. A lot of people watch that TV screen every week and they all know what's going on. There's a reason why, is, and, and from the people that I talk to, the reason why they don't come up here is because of the bull that goes on up here at this town hall. And I think the town of Acton's a lot smarter than where they put on. And at the end of the day, stuff like this here, I'm glad you think this is a great thing, okay? That, a bunch of stuff there, that, a bunch of unknowns, a bunch of, um, drive-bys is what I call it. Um, you can mail stuff out and you can believe it. I, I hope a lot of people come to town meeting because I believe if a lot of people come to town meeting, stuff like this is gonna backfire and I hope it does. Um, I, I like to think that someday up here, we can come, do our job, not have to worry, but get inside, swiped every five minutes from some, someone who thinks that, um, well, that, someone who can't get elected selectman who wants to play selectman.
All right. So let's move on from all of this. All right, announcements.
Can I have my two seconds of thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Nothing whatsoever to do with the letter. Um, I want to thank everyone that voted at town meeting and it's everybody that voted. Uh, it's, believe me, it's pretty humbling to go into an election like that. One, not to have anybody run against you, I really greatly appreciate it and it's a little scary. So I'm either doing something right or there's absolutely nobody else that wants these seats up here, so, but I do want to thank everyone, um, that came out and voted. It is greatly appreciated. Secondly, I will not be at town meeting this year. Uh, this will be the second one that I've missed in 12 years. A dear friend of mine passed away last week up in southwest harbor, Maine, which is the other side of, is the other side of the island of Bar Harbor, and the funeral is Saturday at 2:00. And unless I had a jetpack, there's no way I can do town meeting and get up there for the funeral at 2:00, so I will be up there on Saturday, so, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows the reason I will not be there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to add, since, um, a resident has now clearly stated that the deputy CEO filed a grievance against some employee, which he would have absolutely no way of knowing unless the employee, previous employee shared that with him, I'm asking this board to publicly state that there was an investigation that I was not involved in and that there was no findings of that. And it is about me, so I have the right to ask you to, to release whatever you so choose, but there was an investigation, there was a long process involved, a lot of outside people, and I'm asking you now to publicly clarify that now that I've been, once again.
Do you want me to do it?
I'll have you do it.
Thank you.
I'll chip in, but yeah.
Sure. Nope, there was.
Deal with it.
There was a grievance filed. We did take it in seriously. We spent.
There was more than one grievance filed, did I not?
Right.
Yes, there was.
There was.
Just so we're clear.
Yeah.
Yes.
We took actually several months investigating it in several different ways. We also, at the same time, there was a class that came up with MMA. Kim and I went up to Augusta, this would have been.
A year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half ago, this is back in 19.
That was a good class.
And we took the class. It was kind of during, and the class was during and after our, um.
Really?
Class, you know, during and after our, um, investigation. And what we came out of the class with is that we did it right and there was, we did not find anything against our, our town administrator that was substantiated, so.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, announcements. Planning board, Thursday, June 17th at 6:00 PM. Town meeting, Saturday, June 19th at 9:00 AM. Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, June 30th, 6:00 PM. And Lions Breakfast, July 3rd.
That's at 8:00 o'clock.
I haven't had one of those in a while.
Eight to 10, nice.
Eight to 10, the first one back on.
Great.
One in a year, that's awesome.
They'll look forward to it.
What days are?
Saturday, July 3rd.
I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.